First on the agenda, we have the Tomorrow Plan, but Rick, did you have any comments you wanted to make before we get started?
No, I didn't really. I think we're ready to launch right into this.
Okay, very good.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. Bethany Wilcox with the Des Moines Area MPO, and we just wanted to give you a quick update about the Tomorrow Plan. And just as a reminder, back in October of 2010, we received a $2 million grant from the Partnership for Sustainable Communities, which is a partnership between the Department of Housing and Urban Development, the Environmental Protection Agency, and the Department of Transportation. This is the first time these three agencies have really worked together. Program is designed to break down some of the silos that have traditionally existed amongst these three groups. As I mentioned, in October of 2010, the MPO-led consortium received a $2 million grant. It's also leveraging almost $1.1 million in local resources. This comes from the DART Forward 2035 Plan, Capitol Crossroads, and then from the communities. We are one of 45 grant recipients in the first year of the grant program. First year, we were the only grant recipient in the state of Iowa. Second year, the Omaha Council Bluffs area did receive a grant as well. And then, just as a reminder, all the communities and some of our other partners did sign a consortium agreement agreeing to work on these other things beyond just transportation. We do have a 25-member steering committee. We have several Des Moines representatives on it. Councilman Mahaffey, Councilman Coleman, Mayor County, and then City Manager Clark all serve on this, along with several other elected officials from around the metro area. We also have about half of the committee, though, representing a variety of different subject matters. So we have the Greater Des Moines Partnership on there. We have the Polk County Housing Trust Fund on there, Iowa State University, Iowa Department of Natural Resources. Really trying to make sure we cover all of our bases because the Tomorrow Plan is so far-reaching. In addition to the steering committee, we have a number of community partners. We know that we cannot take this on alone if the plan is going to be implemented, so we have a number of community partners, again, covering a wide variety of topics, as you can see here. Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Civic Music Association, DART, The Bike Collective, Waterworks, really covering all of the different elements that make a region function. Our vision is to be a collaborative, vibrant, and dynamic region of lasting value, equity, and diversity. Plan is looking out to the year 2050, so we have a long time to get to this point, but we want to start now. We want to be proactive about these different pieces. And the mission of the Tomorrow Plan is ever mindful of future generations to cooperate across political boundaries to achieve social, economic, and environmental resilience for Greater Des Moines. And also, looking at the changing demographics of the 21st century. We've heard about all of these different demographic changes across the country. We're going to see these same things right here in our own region. So looking at the aging population, we all know about the great mass of baby boomers across country and right here in Des Moines. So what does that mean for our transportation system, for the land use system, for people where they want to live and work? Looking at what the traditional household means, we're seeing more baby boomer students, or excuse me, boomer-ing students move home after college if they're not necessarily able to find a job. We're also seeing multi-generational households, so what does that mean for our future? Looking at the demographic remix, by 2042, we won't have a majority race in the U.S., so what is that going to mean for our schools, for our cultures? Is it going to create stronger communities? And finally, looking at the X, Y, Z factor. This refers to people ages 45 and under. They're exhibiting lots of different lifestyle choices and preferences. For example, in the last five years, the percentage of 18- to 34-year-olds owning cars has dropped by 30%. So is that something we can expect to see in the future? So we really want to make sure that we prepare for this as we move forward. So today, I really want to focus on the five regional initiatives that we have as part of the Tomorrow Plan. These are very cross-cutting, touching on a variety of goals, moving us towards that more resilient future as far as the economy, environment, and social equity. They involve many partners, looking at collective actions as well as individual actions for residents of our region. We know they're pretty lofty, but we know that working as a region, we're capable of much, so we really think they are attainable. And as I go through these, if you have any questions, please feel free to stop me. So we have five major initiatives here. Just introduce them quickly. Concept of nodes and corridors, really supporting our economic development. Looking at the greenway system, looking at regional cooperation, resilient neighborhoods, and finally, this concept of everyday stewards. So we'll go ahead and jump in with the nodes and corridors idea. And this is really encouraging development in economic and cultural focal points and connecting those areas with DART routes. We've worked with DART since day one to make sure our plans are aligning. They've just finished up DART Forward 2035, so we want to make sure we're falling in line with that, that our vision is moving in the same direction. So we are working on this idea of nodes and corridors, talking about what areas we want to see development focused in, and we know there are different scales. Downtown Des Moines is very different than the Beavertale area, for example. So looking at what do those different areas look like, who do they serve? So again, this map is a first draft. We're working to have conversations with all of the communities around the metro area to make sure we're covering the right bases, that we're getting included, what needs to be included. And really, these aren't so much about only location, but also the design. Couple examples here. This picture you're looking at right now, you could see anywhere around Greater Des Moines. Then, we start to look at this nodes and corridors idea, though, it could become something like this. Much more walkable, pedestrian-friendly, it's a place where there's life on the streets, the places that we want to see in our region. So just an idea of what we're kind of talking about here. Next, looking at typical big-box store, again, can find this anywhere around the metro area. So is this something we want to see in our communities? Or do we want something more like this? So just something to consider as we move forward. Again, I can't reiterate enough that the Tomorrow Plan is not mandatory, it's all voluntary. We know that what works in the city of Des Moines is not necessarily going to work in the city of Carlisle and vice versa. So it's all about taking these goals, initiatives, and strategies and figuring out how they best work in our own individual communities. Next is this idea of the greenway system, really building a fully-connected system of natural resource areas and selectively expanding the network. Throughout all of our public input meetings, we heard time and again, people love getting outdoors, love recreating, but the greenways are for more than recreation, helping to mitigate flooding issues, looking at stormwater issues, creating that natural habitat for so many animals. So we're recommending several steps to be taken at the regional level. First, looking at watershed management authorities. Again, 2080 agreements, voluntary agreements that communities are going to work together, four-mile greenway, for example, that you're already working on. Looking at completing a natural areas inventory, really understanding what's out there in our region. That positions us to address some of these problems to a greater extent, so we want to complete that. Looking to develop Waterworks Park as a great regional hub, leveraging the existing trail system. People love getting out there, as I just mentioned, so really leveraging that, using that for not only economic development purposes, but commuting purposes even. And finally, developing ecological buffers for some of the reasons I already mentioned. And I apologize, this map isn't the greatest, but you can see we have a pretty vast network of greenways around the metro area, so really leveraging and enhancing that as we move forward, but making sure we do that as a region and making sure we're really coordinating on these different pieces. Next, this idea of regional cooperation, really looking across those jurisdictional boundaries to continue to make some progress. Looking at a region-wide approach to managing systems, including utilities and infrastructure. And really, the idea is here, is to try to create a more efficient system and reduce costs where possible. So one thing we're looking at is this regional stormwater management. And again, going back to the greenways piece, this really demonstrates how cross-cutting all of these goals and initiatives are. This idea of watershed management authorities, it's a great way to move forward with this regional cooperation. Looking at natural stormwater utilities, looking at best practices as far as stormwater. And then also, looking at establishing a regional infrastructure coordinating committee to increase coordination between not only communities, but also some regional service providers. This would facilitate the process of coordinating across a range of infrastructure types, so not only the MPO, but DART, Des Moines Waterworks, Metro Waste, the WRA. Making sure all of these groups are talking with one another beforehand, before any infrastructure goes in, so we don't have to go in and put in another line when there's already one halfway across town. We want to make sure we're proactive, having these conversations beforehand, so we're using our resources as effectively and efficiently as possible. Now, on the flip side of that, we're also in talks about creating a regional arts and culture committee, quality of life pieces, looking at the local foods, the arts, the place-making, things that really make people want to live in a community. So looking at that, as well as a parallel committee to the regional infrastructure coordinating committee. The next initiative is related to resilient neighborhoods. We have a great diversity of neighborhoods across Greater Des Moines. We recognize that they're all very different. Downtown Des Moines is very different than from the older communities, and even on the suburbs, our neighborhoods are very different. So we want to make sure we recognize that, and we know that new neighborhoods are going to be developed. However, we want to make sure they're developed in a consistent manner with what we want to see in the future, that they're walkable, that they're pedestrian-scale, that people can get to from point A to point B without necessarily having to use a car. So looking at this piece again, and really, it's more than just the physical locations, comes back to the quality of design and the place-making, looking at the connection between transportation and land use. And finally, the last initiative is related to this idea of everyday stewards. These first four initiatives that I've talked about are really related to what can cities do, what can organizations do, but we know the true success of the Tomorrow Plan is going to lie in what you and I, as individuals, can do. So how do I go about changing my commuting patterns? Can I take an alternate mode? Are there groups across the community that I can get involved with? How do I put it in a garden in my own backyard or a compost pile? Any number of things. So really trying to have that balance between what larger groups can do and what the individual can do is what this Everyday Stewards initiative is all about. And we were very encouraged at our last public input meetings to hear people's enthusiasm about continuing to be involved with the Tomorrow Plan. They're excited, they want to stay engaged, they know we can't continue to operate the way we have in the past, so we know that this is going to be a key to success for the Tomorrow Plan. Just to summarize here, five regional initiatives, all voluntary, whatever works best for your community, that's what's going to be implemented per your discretion. Lot of these are low to no cost, many of them are just building upon the conversations that we've already started through this process. And as a reminder, this is all about adapting to a changing future, looking at the different demographics, different conditions, and the economy, the environment, social piece as well. So we want to position ourselves by 2052 still beyond all of these best-of lists. So with that, I would welcome any questions or comments that you may have, and just again, thank you for your time this morning.
Quickly, before we start with questions, I want to, Pat Bodie's sitting right up here, and I see Todd Ashby and Dylan Millenex sitting right back here, who have also worked really hard on this thing all the way from the beginning, so thank you all very much. Christine?
Couple of questions. Can you talk about the Tomorrow Plan and how it connects with the Capitol Crossroads? Because there are a lot of overlaps, as I heard you go through the plan.
Yes, and that's been one of the biggest questions throughout. We've been working with them since day one, since both of these were just grant applicant, well, since the Tomorrow Plan was grant application. We're working very closely, coordinating on all of these different pieces with the watershed management authorities piece, for example. We're working very closely with the Environmental Capital Group. They have 11 capitals, subcommittees for all of these different groups. So we have staff members on all of those different committees. We're in constant contact with the partnership staff, making sure we're not duplicating efforts. All of these are about improving our region for the better, no matter what topic it may be. So just working very closely with them. Tomorrow Plan is a bit more focused on the metro area, whereas the Capitol Crossroads effort is a 50-mile radius of the state capitol. So they're a little bit bigger geographic area, they're also a shorter timeframe, they're a five-year vision strategy where we're looking out to 2050. So a little bit different in that regard, but again, working very closely, hand-in-hand, almost on a daily basis with them.
So then you talked about the Regional Arts and Culture Committee that you want to establish through the Tomorrow Plan, but there's already a regional...
Yep.
Okay, so is that not...
We're just in the very beginning discussion stages of that, and that really came out of, we were having a discussion about this regional infrastructure coordinating committee and realizing we needed to balance that out because, again, those groups aren't necessarily having those proactive conversations, but we also recognize that that's not what's going to get people to come to this region necessarily. So again, really looking to Capitol Crossroads to leverage what's already in place, so not recreating anything, just leveraging that.
Okay, and then the whole concept of regional cooperation, obviously, I love that, but it seems like it needs to have some teeth to it, and your last comment here is it's all voluntary.
That, yeah, and that's one of the big challenges of the plan. We just don't have that authority to mandate anything. Potential incentives, we're looking at what those might be right now. For example, this Partnership for Sustainable Communities, HUD, DOT, and EPA at the federal level, they're looking at what's called preferred sustainability status. And so basically, if the city of Des Moines is applying for a grant from the DOT, for example, and you're working to further the goals of the Tomorrow Plan, you would give the MPO a form to fill out, and we would confirm that, and then you would automatically be bumped to the top of the list or get X number of extra points through that process. They are still working out the details of that. We've heard different timelines from when that is going to show up, but we don't really know right now. But that could be one great incentive piece, but unfortunately, we don't have any authority to mandate anything or really move anything forward.
Two things. You had some sub-grantees?
Yes.
Out of your $2 million grant, who were the sub-grantees?
Iowa State received some money, they're doing some work for us, and then Capitol Crossroads received some money as well, just to move those forward.
And didn't DART receive some money?
Yes.
Okay. Also, given, because there aren't earmarks anymore, and there are a lot of competitive grants that take place, do you not feel that probably, as HUD gives out some of those future grants, as they look at the competitive basis of it, as you just pointed out, that they're likely to take an MPO recommendation that meets some of their outcomes that they very specifically stated in the original application?
Yes, and actually, the Partnership for Sustainable Communities is looking to expand beyond those original three agencies, so they're looking to include FEMA, USDA, EDA, CDC, Health and Human Services, a number of other groups, to really show that all of these systems are connected. We can't just look at the transportation in its own silo. So I think as we move into the future, that will just become more and more important for the federal government.
But in the meantime, so as we make recommendations and applications for certain dollars, probably our MPO process ought to include making sure that we meet some of the outcomes that they're looking for as opposed to building, as people said in the past, a road to nowhere.
Well, that would be up to our MPO policy board.
True, but with review, I would speculate from DOT in Washington. Yeah. Right.
I have a lot of, I think, some concerns about this term "regionalism." It seems to be a one-way street, that everybody wants the city of Des Moines to get into regionalism with the suburbs, and yet, the suburbs never reciprocate, and they never work with us in a way that makes any sense whatsoever. I mean, I guess I'm all for regionalism, but it's a two-way street. That's my point. And so I think we all have sort of some level of concern with that and the way things have shaken out over the last couple of years. I just want to voice that concern. I haven't been to a suburb in like 10 weeks. I can't, I can't say that they don't ever come into the city, so it's more important for them to be a part of it than for me. I don't really care about suburbs, so...
That would be the headline.
I do, I do care, but not in the sense of regionalism. I'm sorry.
Don't press that out.
Any other comments? Anybody? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you all.
You bet.
It's true, though.
All right, let's move right into our report on Fleet, I think we're going to work on today.
Mr. Mayor, while Diane's getting her things set up, Scott Sanders is going to lead this up. There's been a lot of discussion about the DriveCam program. It hasn't been implemented yet. We wanted to do the presentation today for you and roll out the program so you understood it, and get your comments before we do this step forward. Scott, please.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. So the Des Moines city vehicles travel 7 million miles a year, and so naturally, we're very interested in the safety of driving city vehicles, as well as the fuel consumption and the costs related to that. So this program and this technology that you're going to hear about monitors both the safety habits with driving, as well as the fuel consumption. Again, as City Manager Clark has mentioned, we're looking at a trial. Nothing has been determined at this point as far as the permanency. We are experimenting with this technology that the private industry has already embraced, and cities across the country are just now starting to implement some of these programs as the cost has come down. So really, this presentation is just to kind of bring you up to speed with what we're looking at for the trial period. We do have a representative from DriveCam with us as well. If there are questions, Brian Bennett, our Fleet manager, will give the presentation.
Good morning, Brian Bennett, Fleet manager. Scott, thank you for that introduction. There's not that many Fleet managers that get an introduction, so I do appreciate that. That's a new reporting arrangement for us, so I do report to Scott as finance director at this time. I do appreciate the opportunity to give you a brief update and introduction to some technology, actually, that from a Fleet perspective, I've been evaluating for the last couple of years. Excuse me, during that time, from Fleet staff has looked at probably the top five GPS or traditional providers of vehicle tracking systems in some fashion or another. DriveCam and one of its competitors that have event recording capability made a presentation to us last fall, and based on that evaluation of those presentations, we entered into the trial arrangement for DriveCam. So in the next few minutes, I want to kind of describe really what is the technology, how does it work, and lastly, why are we trying it, to begin with. As far as some hardware and some features, this is the Event Video Recorder. It has global positioning in it, an accelerometer or a G-force indicator, that's what triggers the event, that saves it to a file. It does take force on that. There's a forward-looking view and a rear-facing view. This would typically be mounted at the center of the windshield of each vehicle. I'll go ahead and send that around. I would like to get it back, Elliot's worth some money, so... The contained in that hardware device is GPS, which indicates speed and location of the vehicle. The accelerometer or the G-force indicator measures G-forces, left, right, up, down, forward, and back. And again, that's what would, that's what would trigger an event to be saved as a file. There's only, in this system, there's only 12 seconds of recorded video. From the point that the device is triggered, it looks back at eight seconds. We're capturing eight seconds of video prior to some type of force on the hardware, and then continues to save the event for four more seconds, for a total of 12 seconds. We've got some example videos. I need to jump out of this just for a second because they don't play within the PowerPoint. One of them, this first one that you're going to see is actually an exoneration. These are actual videos from, this is municipality, is it correct? This is actually from a municipality. This shows an exoneration where the city driver was originally accused of being at fault, and through the use of this technology, was exonerated from that, from that accident. Okay, several things happening there. Remember, the hardware has dual lens, so there's a forward-looking view and also an in-cab view that captures the driver's actions at the time. We'll progress this a little bit, and I want you to take a, take a look at a couple of things. Approaching the intersection, you see he's faced with two green lights here, cross-traffic is stopped, he's just going about his business, listening to Soul Sister by the group train. And actually, T-boned at that intersection. So just an example of an exoneration where there was an original claim that he may have been at fault, so there was the, the evidence to show that he was not at fault in that case. A second, a second video is... This is a little different. This is an example of distracted driving on the part of the driver. This would be, as DriveCam analyzes this and presents it to the customer, this would be an example of a coachable opportunity for the, and our coaches would be the frontline supervisors who would review events. This would be a coaching opportunity for that supervisor to have a discussion with that driver about distracted driving. Okay, a couple of things there. It was obviously a near miss. Couple of things to look at there, there's a handheld device there. It does have seatbelt. This is, this would be one of the key performance indicators. This is, this would be one of the key performance indicators that DriveCam analysts and coaches would look for. There is seatbelt use, at least shoulder belt use, but notice handheld device, vehicle in front, you'll notice brake lights coming on and a turn signal indicator. So a near miss, it's a coachable event. That's something that that particular driver supervisor, acting as a coaching role, has an opportunity to have a discussion about distracted driving techniques. How does the system work? The hardware, the event recorder itself, also contained in that is a cellular device that this will upload on a daily basis. It does not use any of the city's IT infrastructure. This is completely cell-based, and so those recorded events that are triggered and saved, the 12 seconds of video actually goes off to the DriveCam servers. The next thing that happens is, this is part of the uniqueness of this system for fleet tracking, is part of the monthly service fees are to go to DriveCam analysts that will actually review each video event. They'll also score those based on those key performance indicators that we provide to in seatbelt use, distracted driving, handheld device. Are they looking far enough ahead or are they following too close? So this is taking place at the DriveCam analyst, produces data for us, presents a real coaching opportunity for that frontline supervisor to coach that individual employee. The result of this action, we're really presented with safer drivers. We're reducing our risk with effective coaching. There's, in addition to this safety and this risk component, that is a little bit unique compared to previous fleet tracking technology that we've evaluated, it also incorporates what I call traditional, maybe what we're more familiar with, of fuel management and fleet tracking. So we do have the ability to go back and look at some routing. We can certainly measure the effects of fuel efficiency. If there's safer drivers, less distraction, we should see some increase in fuel efficiency. Really, the results that we get from the, from the system, from utilizing this system is we can identify those exonerations as one example portrayed. We should reduce the frequency of risking driving behaviors with that effective coaching element. We can also reduce the severity of those driving behaviors and ultimately have less distracted driving actions. We should, we should be able to monitor and increase the use of seatbelts. I mentioned the fuel efficiency, and we'd certainly want to identify and recognize safe driving habits. We should, we should be celebrating those when we can recognize those. Benefits to us, we have safer city drivers. Your safer driver, this probably spills over into your personal life also. The measurable benefits for us will come in reduced collision frequency. Three components to that, really. Vehicle repair, that's kind of my business, the bent metal, that's the actual repair of the city vehicle. There's some reduction in the auto liability of claims that would be paid out for personal injury or damaged property to others. And there's a workers' compensation cost component that should be reduced. Reduced fuel consumption. And finally, strategic fleet utilization. Because of that fleet tracking capability, we can see how that fleet moves, that 7 million miles that Scott talked about, to see if perhaps we can be more efficient in that. We can also see individual vehicle use. If a vehicle's being underutilized, we would reassign it, perhaps take it out of the fleet, put it into a position where there's greater utilization for that vehicle. Three examples, anyway, of current government entities that have realized a benefit, a net benefit from the use of the system. San Antonio in Texas reduced their preventable accidents from 147 to 57, so they reduced them almost by two-thirds just in two years of use. Tyler, Texas, they decreased collision costs by over half of that just during their trial period. Orange County, Florida, they decreased their accident costs 81%, and the frequency was reduced by 76% in the first year of use. What's the next steps for us? Because I don't know that this will work for us. That's, that's why I wanted to try it. That's why it's a trial program. It's 120 days. We have identified 125 vehicles within the Public Works, Parks, Recreation, and Fleet Department that we could try this on. We intend and could have a kickoff as soon as April 22nd, based on continued feedback. There would be, there's a pause point of a mid-trial program review to make sure that our key performance indicators are on track, to see if we want to make any adjustments. We could have some preliminary results as early as the mid-trial program review, and certainly a post-trial analysis probably in August or September. Those post-trial steps would include the business case analysis. This is, this is truly a cost-benefit analysis for us. We need to quantify the value of those benefits. We need to look at our baseline costs of our collision frequencies. We evaluate those benefits versus the cost and come back and make a recommendation based on that trial program. With that, I would try to receive any questions. Like Scott said, Rush Aitken is here from DriveCam, who's had some experience implementing in a municipal environment.
I didn't realize the mayor left. Questions for?
I've got some. First of all, I'd like to point out that first film he showed where the guy was listening to Train, there didn't need to be a camera on the driver. The camera pointing forward exonerated everybody. And I think that we need to evaluate this on how our employees feel about this. I know I wouldn't want a camera on me all day. I don't think anybody does. Also, you pointed out that the hundred benefits, the bent metal part is your part of it?
Correct.
Who pays for that repair?
We would analyze that on the basis of our costs, our at-fault actions.
No, I mean, if, if, if somebody from Public Works is driving a vehicle and they're in a wreck and you've got to repair it, who pays for that? It's Public Works, correct?
Correct. The department doesn't.
So it's not solely, the bent metal's not solely your part, it's also the department that the vehicle comes from.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I'm sorry. It's ultimately the charges flow to the departments. My, my point was that it's a fleet repair, so we can analyze those costs.
I'd like to acquire a list of any cities that have had these cameras and had them removed, or considered them and decided they didn't want to have them. And I just want the list. I'll contact them myself.
Okay.
Other questions? Hallie, did you have?
Yeah, I do have a couple. The first thing, I think what you mentioned about it being a cost-benefit analysis is really probably the most important key for me. Even just looking through some of the initial numbers in terms of the upfront equipment purchase and then the ongoing maintenance seemed rather high, even compared to the governmental results that we've seen, you know, the reductions in crashes and so forth. I'm not sure even if we achieved those kind of results, that it would outweigh the cost being invested. So that's something I think we'll need to look at, that I'm particularly concerned with. I do understand Skip's point about employees not wanting to be on camera all the time. But by the same token, if I'm an employee, I also don't want to review every, every year. I just want a merit increase. I mean, I mean, that's just kind of the, the nature of how we do our jobs. I mean, we, we would rather not be reviewed or called out for, for making mistakes, but we are accountable for the equipment and so forth. So I don't necessarily have a problem with the program. As is one, one question I did have, and I don't know if you have the answer to this. Does the technology have a capability where we can do like live look- ins to confirm that seatbelts are being worn? I know if you work in, say, a call center, your manager can get on the line with you, listen to your, your conversation to confirm that, you know, quality assurance. Do we have that sort of ability with this particular unit to make sure people aren't texting, to make sure seatbelts are being worn, so forth?
Right. The indication from DriveCam, it's a great question. It's a common question. Indication from DriveCam is that technology does not exist. Although the camera is on, it's wired hot, the only way to save an event is to actuate that either through the G-force effect on that. There is a manual trigger button that the driver has as an option. If they would observe something or if they want to capture those 12 seconds, they can manually trigger that. But that's our information, is that the technology doesn't exist for them to activate and actually record that or appear in live.
Okay. Is that an add-on that's possible in the future, or would that require all-new software, hardware?
I don't believe that's capable, but I'm going to kind of defer to Rush. Is that even, that's capable?
Yeah, that's more surveillance industry type of stuff. I mean, that's not, that's not anything that can be added on or turned on or anything. We don't have access to it, neither does the, does the city.
Great.
Okay. Brian?
If you're looking for an indication from folks on the council whether to move forward, I don't want to move forward. I don't think this is, I don't think it's a good program. I thought about it over the weekend, had discussions with folks. In some iteration possibly of data collection, but not the, not the front, not the driver-facing camera. I just, I can't imagine that being necessary. There's ways to find out what happened without it. I'd be open to other things, but right now, I would be a no on this particular proposal. And I thought about it, and I thought, I wouldn't want anybody watching me, or, you know, that sort of thing when I was driving, and I just don't see the necessity for it. And I think we do a good job on investigations as is, so that's my position.
I've got a couple of comments, and you, I think, alluded to it in your presentation, but it's my understanding that we did have a pilot in the vehicles a couple of years ago, and I also understand that they came back and indicated that there was a significant savings, but we did not go forward. So, two questions. Number one, why did we not go forward? Secondly, what is different between that pilot project and what you're proposing today?
And we did indeed test some, what I call, traditional GPS. That was much like what Councilman Myers was talking about, of data, just data collection of speed, fuel efficiency. At that time, when we did, and that was a very small sample, that was less than 20 vehicles. At that time, although there, the provider may have felt that there was a net benefit to it, our, the biggest savings would have come in idle reduction. And that, again, is a very, we would have, you know, absent the absolute policy and then enforcement of that policy, that would have been difficult to obtain. Also, at that time, monthly service fees were, I'm trying to recall, between $50 to $60 per month just for that technology. So we did not see that as a net cost benefit because of, the largest component was a reduction in fuel due to idling. Whereas the largest, and to answer the second-party question, the contrast, this system, the largest component of cost savings is through the coaching and reducing the frequency and severity of distracted driving.
So you're saying that the coaching component of DriveCam is the most significant piece in this program?
Correct. And that's a contrast to what we evaluated before was just a way to monitor the amount of idling, the fuel efficiency-related idling. We would have to still affect some type of organizational culture change to reduce that idling.
Okay. I get, one of the concerns I have is, and I'm not sure where I'm at on this, but I'm very concerned that we're going to have a company come in that's going to be allowed to do a pilot. Why would we not allow three or four companies that offer this service to have the opportunity to do a pilot? Because what I'm feeling is, you're almost locked in to DriveCam. I mean, we're just going to get their numbers, we're just going to get their savings. I'd like to see it compared to other companies and go back and demonstrate to me the previous pilot that we did, if you expanded it, and I just don't want to just hand it to DriveCam because you're, you're going down the road. And I think it's very difficult then for you to look at other options. I believe that we should have pilots of, you tell me whatever the companies are, and we have a chance to really do an analysis. I'm just not comfortable handing it to one company right now, especially when we had a project a couple of years ago. I didn't know about this project a couple of years ago. I don't think I did.
About five or six years ago.
It was two years ago. I've gotten emails from people that did it.
Correct.
And I'm just, you know, I didn't know about that. We, I just want to make sure I have all of the information that were compared side by side and that everybody's given an opportunity if we're going to look at something like this. Doesn't mean that we're going to do it, but I don't want to just put all of my apples in one basket.
I understand. It's a great point. I'll just respond briefly to that, is that we were presented with the opportunity of, my knowledge based on our due diligence, of two providers that had event capability. DriveCam happened to offer this at no cost to the city. Smart Drive is the other company. There was a cost to their trial program. That's, that's essentially why we ended up with DriveCam at this time, but that's certainly something that we could probably look at.
You know, I would think it would be reasonable to have to pay a little cost to have pilots. I mean, I wouldn't expect to have it all just given to us. I'd feel much more comfortable making some payment to have a pilot project so I can really do an in-depth analysis as to the different systems out there, because I, I just have concerns about the one.
Okay.
I never even knew the company existed until you all came forward with this, so.
Understood.
Any other questions, comments? Do you have a set of outcomes and things that you want out of a, out of a study?
Yes.
And then to give that to a number of other companies that, you know, might also be interested?
We.
I like the no-cost item. I'm not in the same place Mrs. Hensley is. I'm not really, if somebody's willing to do it for nothing, I'd like to try that one.
Right.
But on the other hand, what, what are we achieving? What do you hope to achieve? And would you put that out as an RFP or a request for demonstration?
Right.
An RFD?
That could be a path. Like I said, there's only two known providers to me, and we can certainly do some more research. There's only two known providers at this time that provide the recorded event capability. So, I mean, it could be an RFP path. DriveCam happens to be offered on existing contracts that we buy off of. That could be a path that we could take, though.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Anything?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, council members, we really appreciate all the comments. Obviously, Brian and his staff and Scott and others have spent a lot of time trying to look at this and figure out an approach that works. It is all about saving money at the end of the day. You don't do something like this just to put the cameras in the vehicles. You do it because down the road, you think you're going to save some money. And I think Brian said, there's no, there's no definitive information right now that if we implement the pilot program, it would be concluded with a decision to go forward. So I think you've got to have real data in front of you that allows you to evaluate the cost-benefit. At this point, my intention would be to take all of the comments you've made here, try to address those, and bring it back before you, perhaps on the next council agenda, and just see what you think at that point in terms of how we go forward with it.
The next council agenda?
The next council agenda. So it would be the...
So maybe it could be the morning workshop and then the council agenda? Are you asking for specific action to be taken then at the council meeting?
I, yeah, given the, given the different views, it seems to me the only way we're going to get to it is to, is just have a vote on it. So it seems to me either put it on the council agenda, we could do a workshop again and address questions, and then bring it to the agenda, or just go right to the, to the council agenda, whatever your preference is.
What's anybody think? You want to hear any more ideas that Brian might have before we vote on?
I think if I get the answers to the questions today at a workshop, I'll just bring it right back to Clark and I.
Yeah, that's where I think I'm at.
Okay. So on the, well, the eighth, assuming we can get it back together again by the eighth, we'll come back on the eighth workshop, and we'll have more information, and then we can go from there to agenda further.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, we're going to get a legislative update, and we're actually on time here today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I have a little handout here that I've been providing bills to watch each week with the second funnel week approaching. Up at the Capitol at the end of next week, things are starting to pick up a little bit, although none of the big items that would lead to early adjournment have been completed yet. A few bills have been sent to the governor, more have been passed in one chamber. A few bills have been sent to the governor, more have been passed in one chamber and then sent on to the other chamber, so there are a few bills that we're continuing to monitor, and a few that we wanted to keep in the forefront of council's attention. The first bill is House Study Bill 150, that's the Governor's Property Tax Reform Bill, and that bill was passed by the House Ways and Means Committee after they adopted an amendment to the bill that was passed on a party-line vote. The adopted amendment does decouple industrial from the other classifications, but the industrial classification will still mirror the commercial classification in terms of the rollback. So in other words, the, under the amended bill, industrial will not serve as a limiting factor for growth. Remember, historical data shows that industrial grows very slowly, but the amended language will effectively limit industrial, commercial rollback levels. The amended bill also incorporates the school foundation formula funding from House File Two with the Governor's Property Tax Bill. Other than this latest amendment, nothing's really changed. It's still a 20 percent rollback with some proposed backfill. The backfill is capped at 2017 levels for all succeeding years after 2017, and the growth is capped at the lower of the 2 percent, or the lowest of any property class except industrial now. If the backfill amount is insufficient, it'll be prorated for municipal losses, but the proration is still inequitable in terms of TIP prorations. Senate File, excuse me, Senate File 327 is a 411 Technical Changes Bill. That has been passed and goes to the governor. It makes the 411 pension system IRS compliant. They've been trying to do this for about three years. There are no changes in terms or benefits other than to allow a member who is disabled due to military service to be eligible for disability retirement regardless of whether or not they return to service after the disability, and that is also retroactive to 2007. Bill was passed in the Senate for radon testing, that Senate File 366, and would require building code standards for radon control in new residential construction and would supersede any existing radon standards as of January 2015 in homes. It would also require schools to test for radon every two years, and if radon levels were at a high level, they would have to do a second test, and if it's above a certain level, they'd have to do mitigation and abatement as well. Senate File 387 is a reserve fund borrowing bill. There's a companion bill in the House as well. This bill would allow cities to borrow from their reserve funds rather than issuing public debt for certain public projects. Loans, these reserve fund loans would have to go through the same borrowing process and rules concerning the issuance of debt in the form of bonds. The city would have to certify taxes to be levied for deposit into the debt service fund and for principal and interest, and would not be able to increase property taxes or to increase any fees because of the loans, and the loans could only be issued for corporate or essential corporate purposes. The Senate passed that bill, so it goes on to the House. Excuse me. House File 524 is a utility lien bill. This makes a commercial rental property exempt from the imposition of a lien for delinquent water charges. If the landlord gives a utility notice, that the tenant will be responsible. Basically mirrors what's already set up for residential, for commercial properties. Deposits can be charged by the utility providers to a maximum of 90 days of service. Last year, it included all, all charges, so water, stormwater, storm sewer, sewer services were all included in this. This year, it is still limited to water at this point in time. That could impact us because water works, it does do all the city's billing, so we'll check it out administratively to see where it goes and to see whether or not any other utilities get added. Senate File 381 is preventing window falls, and that is another Building Code Commission requirement, to put requirements into the building code for devices to prevent falls from windows in hotels, motels, and apartments that are paid for in part with state or local money. Senate File 402 would require assignment of dental insurance benefits in writing and make that assignment without prejudice that the payments were made in good faith, and would eliminate any duplicate payments based on the assignment. Senate File 308 is a pregnancy reasonable accommodation bill. This bill would require reasonable accommodations for pregnant employees. As I understand it, the city is already very accommodating to pregnant employees, so we haven't taken a position on the bill and are monitoring this particular bill. And then Senate File 304 is a public safety training bill, would establish the Public Safety Training and Equipment Trust Fund, and then take funds from insurance premiums, receipts for, for the trust fund, and then have a matching general fund appropriation component. This would allow some equipment costs other than vehicles, but it's under the control of the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy, so we're monitoring that bill as well. And as usual, with any other items that come up or anything that passes, we will keep council informed.
Seems like that last one, that as far as the insurance premiums go up, so they can get their share, so...
That's what I was trying to figure out, how that's funded.
It would take a percentage of the insurance premiums, and I believe that insurance is related to fire insurance premiums, and it would take a small percentage of that to fund the trust.
Building and property fire would be...
Potentially, yes.
On that first one on there, how is that reforming residential property tax?
Number 150, the governor's?
Yes.
The, the argument would be that by placing the 2 percent growth limit, you wouldn't be able to have the increase that we've seen in valuations, increase in residential property taxes.
If we roll back commercial property by 20 percent, there's a potential there for possibly increasing residential property taxes to help fill the gap, correct?
Absolutely. I mean, what, what would happen would be either more service cuts would have to take place dramatically, and Rick may want to explain that, or your property tax rate would have to rise.
I guess the correct title would be Commercial Property Tax Reform, then.
That's just what the title of the bill is up at the Hill.
Want to make any quick comments?
Well, obviously, from the standpoint of the city's finances, the property tax legislation is the most critical one. Scott Sanders has done a good deal of work to try to analyze what the fiscal impact of this would be on the city of Des Moines, and without getting into all those details, I can tell you that the impacts, even in the best-case scenario, are in the multi-millions of dollars. And, of course, it's ultimately up to you in terms of how we would manage with that shortcoming in revenues. You could either increase taxes, or you could cut expenditures to, to take care of that loss. My own view is that we've cut $27 million or so in annual expenses from our general fund budget over the years, and further cuts would be very difficult for this city to achieve without having noticeable impacts in service delivery across our community. So, this is a critical bill, and, and the fiscal impacts are, are quite dramatic, so it's, in my view, my, our interest is all about trying to mitigate those adverse impacts and trying to come up with a bill that doesn't frankly continue the sort of fiscal challenges that we've had in recent years in terms of reduced revenues.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I ask Jeff a question. On your public safety training synopsis, it talks about include, includes formula for matching general fund appropriations. Would that be a mandatory match for the city of Des Moines?
As I understand it, not at this point.
Okay. It could be, though.
They could change the legislation, yes.
Right.
I do have one more question. The bill that was considering whether people living in a house have to all be family or not, did that make it past the funnel?
It, it did make it past the funnel. It was scheduled for debate, I believe in the House, and was pulled from debate and has not, as I understand it, has not been rescheduled to this point in time. Doesn't mean that it won't still come back, but I think the city, and especially the neighborhood groups, did a great job of communicating concerns, and I believe that had some effect up there.
I was also advised by the majority leader that they were concerned about inconsistencies and unintended consequences, and that they would be receptive to a, having a, a group of people sit down and look at best practices and how to move forward.
Could you keep us up to date on that?
Oh, absolutely.
Right.
Anything else? All right, next item is workshop priorities.
Mr. Mayor, council members, this was an item that was placed on here by Chris Coleman. Obviously, Mr. Coleman couldn't make it this morning. I think his intention was to follow up from the action you took a meeting or two ago that has a slightly different approach in terms of setting workshop agendas. I think his intention was to ask you to look at the bottom of the workshop agenda where it talks about proposed future topics and see if that list, I think most of those ideas are ones that have come from you or are just in part of the process, so look at those particular workshop topics. If there are ones on there you don't want, let me know. If there are ones that you want to have added to the list, why, let us know. That way, we have some planning we can do and make sure that the preparation work can be done in, in good fashion by the time you're ready for the workshop presentation.
I think one of the things, Rick, that, that comes up from time to time that I hear from, at, at different times from various, in a way, citizens but members of the council is that there are certain things that pop up in their neighborhood, their, their ward, citywide, that need to come up for discussion, but that maybe either didn't, or some surprise things come up on the agenda that nobody ever anticipated that never had reached the future topics list, and ought to be some way to pass it through so we all kind of know what's coming on before, with, with some background that would tell us why it reached that level.
Mr. Mayor, it's a great comment, and I think, I think if, if you could look at this list, make sure that these are the appropriate topics. I think one of the things you said there was trying to get a little synopsis of what the workshop topic would be, so as those agendas are prepared in the future. We've done a little bit here on this one for today where there's a short synopsis of what the subject matter is. But I understand those points. These workshops are really a great opportunity for you to look at a particular subject in more depth and ask questions. We don't take action at these workshop meetings, so really, it's all about trying to get good information in your hands as well as the public's hands, so all those comments are very helpful to us.
Any other thoughts from anybody? I noticed, by the way, the last one, it says the Residential Construction Report. I assume the AKA means also known as Housing Summit?
Mm-hmm.
Boy, that, that would seem like a couple of different deals. I mean, one would be a report, what we get for people that have taken out permits, I would think, and a history of it, and the other would be actually bringing a whole bunch of folks together that actually do this, along with our planning department to figure out how, where we're gonna go with it. A housing summit seems like an all-day affair.
Is that the one that we've had the meetings with developers a couple of times, with a summary of them?
Yes. I think the term Housing Summit was really a term they coined, and we just, we just used the other, the term's not terribly descriptive, so we referred to it as Residential Construction Report. I think what this is, and Phil has spent a lot of time on this, is looking at the process by which construction takes place here, and one of the concerns that came out of that discussion, some of you that were at the meetings may remember this, was the difficulty that we're seeing with achieving residential construction within the city limits of Des Moines compared to suburban community. So there was some discussion about that. I think there's some ideas that have been, that have been suggested, and what this topic would do, I think, would simply report back to you what came out of those discussions that have taken place over, I think, the last 12 months or so, maybe more.
I think part of that is renovation versus new construction, as far as how the, address the, how these things can be accomplished and not be priced out of the market, so to speak.
Right. I think, I think the concern was that you have some areas of the city where you've got a lot of subdivisions with unbuilt lots, and you, and you have right across the city boundary in another community, you have a similar situation, but houses are being built there, but they're not being built here. And so why, why is that disparity occurring, and what does it suggest about marketing strategies or other strategies? It's a fairly important point in terms of, of construction within our community, and this is simply a report that talks about that. Would seek your guidance in terms of where to go from here.
Anything else? Let's open it up. Anybody in the audience want any clarification or make some comments? We're gonna open up, come right up here. Anybody that wants to?
Thomas Hayes, I am the Secretary-Treasurer of CPEC. I represent the city of Des Moines employees, as you all know. I thank you, City Council, for allowing me to come up here and speak. I'm gonna speak on the DriveCam. The biggest concerns I've had with the DriveCam, and I've talked to a couple of council members about it, I made a couple of comments to the paper, made even a comment to KCCI, is cost. Representing the city employees and those that live in the city limits, and many other members who do not work for the city, that are members of our local, that live inside the city limits, I think that the cost itself on a program like DriveCam or any other service should be, at the end of the day, if it saves the cost of the accidents and the workers' comp, should still be less than that cost that you already spend. I don't believe the program will be able to do that. I don't think you ever will be able to find any program that will do that. Those costs cut out paving of roads, there's been plenty of services already cut with the city, plenty of jobs that have been contracted out, so there's no longer employees in those jobs, and the quality that comes out of that contracting is not near as good as what the city employees have provided in the past, and would continue to provide in the future. So you need to think about that when you're looking at the cost.
Thanks, Tom.
I also think that the DriveCam ideas is the horrible idea...
Could you give us your name for the record?
Oh, I'm Jeff Timmerman.
And your address?
I live outside of Des Moines by my own property in Des Moines. Yeah, I think that being camered up in, in your car where you're forced to work all day basically constitutes a hostile work environment, and I personally would quit. I wouldn't accept that from anybody. And that was what I came here to rail about, but now that I've listened to some of their stuff you're talking about, you're talking about basically raising the residential tax rate as a possible solution and gifting it to corporate interests, and then scratching our heads and going, gee, why is everybody building in the suburbs? That's insanity. So hopefully, we can be a little better on that, and, yeah, don't put cameras in cars. That's, you know, the costs aren't just financial, you know, that's a, also costs, you know, in terms of increased stress on workers, and it's not worth it. It's not worth it. I wouldn't stand for it. As a city employee, I'd quit my job. And I, and I don't think any of you want a camera on you all day while you work either. And I don't think that anybody that doesn't have a camera on them all day while they work should vote to put one on somebody else. That's all.
Hey, Jeff, I'd like to clarify what I said about taxes. That will affect all communities statewide, not just Des Moines. That includes our suburbs.
I still don't believe in gifting residential tax fees to corporate interests.
You need to get back to the governor, then. He's the one that's pursuing this.
Thanks.
Good morning. My name is Jeffrey Bennett. I live on Bennett Avenue here in Des Moines. I'd just like to say that seems to me the only one with any fortitude enough to say anything about this is Mr. Moore and Mr. Meyer. Sadly, I find it extremely sad that nobody here has the fortitude to say, we don't want to live in a police state. We don't want cameras on us. Do you want a camera on you? Do you want a camera at your desk all day? Do you want a camera pointing at you all day? Do you want a camera that watches you all day? Do you?
Jeff?
No, you don't. So all I wanted to say, Mr. Mayor, and...
No, you don't. So all I wanted to say, Mr. Mayor and council members respectively, is that, follow up with what Mr. Timmerman said. If anybody would like a camera pointing at them at their desk all day to monitor their behavior and make sure that they stay in line, vote yes on this. Anybody who votes yes on this needs fired. That's all I have to say. Thank you, guys, very much for your time.
Thanks, Jeff.
Joanne Hanover, 1406 Merle Hay Road. I'm here on a different subject. I hope that the council will pick up on sign regulations again. I believe it was Councilperson Hensley who asked that to be worked on, and it did for several months. And I went to numerous meetings of RNO, and the last thing I have here with a date on it was January 10th last year. And that was just because they got loaded with other responsibilities that it got dropped. And I was looking for Mike, but he's not here today. As you know, Merle Hay doesn't like all the signs or the size of them. Merle Hay Road is just loaded with them, and even your own committee, the Board of Adjustment, back in 2010, asked to have the regulations for signs improved. So this has been hanging around for two, three years. I brought my folders, but I decided not to carry them up here. I mean, it's like this tall. And I really urge you to pick that issue back up. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Joanne.
Thanks, Joanne.
Anybody else? Seeing none, let's call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all for attending.